All right, that's most of the faces and it's been five minutes by my clock, so. Let's go ahead and call this work session to order. And. Probably. I think I'm just going to turn it over to Matt and the team to get us started and see where I want to go from there.
Sure. You know. I'll joke a little bit since we're in a work session, it's a little less formal, but the Chiefs didn't win the Super Bowl. This weekend for chaves, but at the same time, you know, his hair looks good and he has good news to keep sharing with you tonight. The vaccines and then some of the stuff around the facility plan here, so. We actually do, in all seriousness, think we have some good news to share this evening around. As we approach facility master plan two point O and some of the steps to take with that, so just want to thank the operations team. For continuing to meet and have an extra meeting and then. Facilities team on our end and operations team putting together the work in a quick fashion and giving us a really good looking. Plan here that we wanted to share with you tonight, so with that I'll have Chase take it away.
That could be the worst compliment you ever given me. But like you said, it's a work session, so. Good evening again, we are, we are excited to spend some time and talk more about. F and P two point O and off the top, thanks to. Lisa Janet and Charlie for all of their work with us over the last couple of meetings. And the work we're going to do the rest of the spring, we do have some good news. Tonight we have three documents we want to share with you first is a finance piece. And then Dwayne is going to go over a new look at the projects and kind of how we've divided those. And then I'm going to find, find, excuse me, finish up. With a timeline document about how we see things maybe looking between now and the vote in November, and so. I will turn it over unless Lisa, do you want to make any, I'm sorry, I didn't talk to you before, but do you want to make any opening comments before we get started as the committee chair?
No.
Okay, perfect, all right. At least I ask, so Les, I will give it to you to talk finance.
Are you able to pull a document up or do you want me to share the screen? Thank you, Chase. Thank you, board members for the opportunity to talk through this and as Chase alluded to. This is pretty exciting information to be able to share with you tonight and where we move forward. If you remember when we talked before, we talked about the fact that we had limited funds available for Pepple. With the preliminary estimates, say would have about forty five million dollars available to borrow in twenty twenty three. And a really big pot of money in twenty twenty nine when our current save revenue bonds are paid off. Pearl would be an option for the district to ask the voters for the thirteen and a half cent levy. And that would generate nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars annually. And then we would also have a potential for a general obligation bond and we've been through. That process before in two thousand and seventeen with our community. And at, when we looked at this from based upon November information, we thought we had. About ninety million dollars available to us at that point in time without asking the voters for an increase in the levy authorization. Well, after the committee met, the board looked at it and we refined and defined. Our phases of the project costs and was able to put more concrete numbers to some of that. With project phasing with an estimated two hundred and fifty five million dollars worth of costs. The Pepple levy would be able to provide just short of fifty million dollars and I'm in the far right hand column for you on the document that's on the screen. Assuming that we extend the current voter board, or excuse me, the voter approved Pepple levy of a dollar thirty four. So that would be fifty million dollars to fund the plan and that would be almost all of phase A projects, which. Dwayne will go through a little bit more detail later. You're aware that we have a Pepple life cycle plan in order to free up a few of the. Pepple dollars, we would need to move seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the Pepple life cycle over to save. For part of this time, so we wouldn't lose those projects in the plan, the funding source would just change and that would be an internal. Process that we would go about with the facilities team. The save revenue bonds would generate. About ninety six million in twenty twenty seven and then another ninety million dollars available in twenty twenty nine. Including that shift of those life cycle costs. This would be no increase in property tax because it's all sales tax driven by the state of Iowa formula. And this would assume that we passed the revenue purpose statement. Beyond twenty twenty nine to January one of fifty or twenty fifty. And which really is the send of our twenty forty nine school year. Kind of weird how the legislation is tied to that, but it has that date in the middle of a fiscal year. Pearl is the third item on there and there is no change to that. Funding option that would require a district vote to implement that new levy that's thirteen and a half cent levy. Would generate the nine hundred and twenty five thousand, like I said. Doesn't change, but it would provide support for some of the FMP two point O projects that we have within. The plan in various phases as well as some of our Pepple life cycle. The pearl levy on a current two hundred thousand dollar house, including the rollback would be a tax levy of about fifteen dollars per year. To give you an idea of what that impacts. So if we were able to combine the Pepple of the fifty million rock, I'm going to round those numbers off for you. And then the save, which is about a hundred and eighty six million dollars. We would end up around two hundred and thirty four, two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. Of funding resources available to support our two hundred and fifty five million dollar plan. So it would leave us roughly nineteen million dollars short. If the pep, excuse me, if the pearl levy was included in there, that would provide over nine million dollars over a ten year period. For that nineteen million dollar remaining amount. And then based upon the conservative estimates, both on the save. Growth and property tax valuation growth. There may be enough cash flow to fund the other nine or ten million dollars. And this plan could be done without a general obligation bond for the community. So. While Sean's sitting there shaking his head, I think he's amazed. That we could do this without requesting that asks from our community. It would require us to ask the community to extend the voter Pepple. Extend the revenue purpose statement to twenty fifty and pass the pearl. Levy to, to put all of those pieces together to work together and. Support this plan, so. As the bottom of the document said, this is based upon current economic conditions. We work with PFM, the financial consultant out of Des Moines and. She has indicated that. You know, all of the estimates are on the very conservative nature, no more than two percent growth in any one of the factors on the sales tax or the property tax and that. Is pretty much about half of what we normally see in those years, and so even in when we're in the middle of a pandemic, those are still considered. Considered conservative from a long term perspective. Factoring, trying to factor in what the interest rates would be when we would borrow and what the capacity is to do that is based upon those current conditions, so. You know, interest rates were to skyrocket, this picture would change slightly and, and we would. You know, communicate that as soon as it becomes known to the board, so I just wanted to. You know, while it's not a legal document, I wanted to put my legal hat on and. Put that caveat on there that's based upon those current conditions and so. But I, the, the thing that I want to point out to the board is, is not only can we do this without the geo bond. But it shows you how important it is to continue with the plan and continue to fine tune that. And what that impact can be as we look at these numbers, so. I'm extremely appreciative of what the committee and the board has done so far to get us to. A phasing plan of where we're at that I'm able to present this tonight, so I'll entertain any questions on any of that. Funding piece. Before we flip it over to Dwayne on the project side.
But before we get to questions, I said this in the operations committee meeting, but I want to reiterate it here in more public session. The board members, I really want to thank Dwayne and I think that the board and the district owe Dwayne a debt of gratitude. For the amazing work he did on FMP one point zero. And we were on time, under budget, we saved, accelerating that construction saved us so much money. That the reason that we're here and only looking at a ten million dollar bridge instead of a thirty or forty or fifty million dollar bridge, which, which may not have been possible, right? When, when we're talking about that much money is Dwayne's effort. And his whole team, I know that Dwayne does not just tool around FISPLAM by himself. Although maybe he does. He's got a whole team of hardworking people underneath him, but really. This amazing job for the, for the first version is, I think, what has set us up to be so successful and, and not have to ask our community to pass another. Go bond, so Dwayne, you so much.
So thank you, always said, it does take a team.
I was just. Trying to get it all straight in my head, so with. With Pepple, it's an extension of a levy, right? And that's how that money comes in and with save it's. Against future income, correct?
I'm, I believe I understood your question, I had a cut out of my connection here, Sean, so yes, the Pepple. Is the voter, was a voter approved levy and that would be an extension of a current levy, so there would be no increase in the levy rate for that tax. The save is based upon the sales tax revenues generated by the state of Iowa that is allocated back to school districts on a per pupil basis. So as our enrollment hopes to rebound and grow, we will continue to get a larger piece of that pie as well, and so we. We've been very conservative with even that piece of the growth as well. In terms of what those resources would be, and that's why that cash flow perspective at the very end. Is also a possibility to help with this funding.
I guess my, my question is, you know. It's to a certain degree, right, you're, you're mortgaging the future for the current, right, when you're borrowing against future. Which is, is not out of the question, I don't want to say we can't do it because we, we, we done it and we will continue to do it. But can somebody remind me when they voted to, for the current save, which is, I think we're borrowing through twenty twenty nine, right? When we did that, so how many years ahead were we looking? Because now we're looking. You know, twenty nine years or whatever, twenty eight years, I guess by the time we vote. To add on, so I just kind of like to know how similar those timeframes are.
Sure, Sean, I will, I will take that one. Our first borrowing was in two thousand and fifteen with the save revenue bonds. But I'll back up with this plan was actually implemented in two thousand and thirteen and it was implemented based upon previous board action to set aside certain dollars for future construction projects. So we had about two years of reserves built up before we had to start any borrowings and we did do a small Pepple loan note in there as well. To start some of those projects, so in two thousand and fifteen. We borrowed then for ahead fourteen years, but at that point in time, that was what was only legally possible because save was only through that period. Now we do have the opportunity to borrow. Until twenty forty nine, so the first borrowing that we're looking at is save is twenty twenty seven under this proposal, so it'd be about twenty two years, so. I, I guess maybe a way to think about that is how you may do that with your own personal mortgage when you take out a thirty year mortgage. You're looking ahead to thirty years of your future earning potential that's going to pay for that mortgage. That's essentially a comparable perspective for the school district here to, to take a look at.
I appreciate that context and the way to look at it and also I was shaking my head just thinking of those. It's like monopoly money when you get dollars that big to think that you could potentially do that much without another general obligation bond is. It's amazing to me, so I do just kind of have to shake my head at that notion because it truly is incredible.
Well, Dwayne will pass go many times with that amount of money.
Last also kind of. Kind of a follow up on Sean's approach here, the safe financing is basically a way of issuing, issuing revenue bonds. Against a revenue stream provided by the state. Mandating collected sales tax, is that, that not correct?
That is correct.
So it's the revenue bond holders that are taking the risk for not having for the revenue stream not continuing. And I'm sure they're pricing that risk into their, to their interest rates on those bonds.
Yes, you know, ultimately the taxpayers of the community could be asked to, to. You know, fork up monies or do a general obligation bond to fund defaulted. Save revenue bonds, but that's. A pretty detailed conversation and to have any specifics on something like that, I'd have to go back to bond consults to. Really give you the full details of that, Charlie.
Well, that's, to me, that's an important issue as what risk? That is, what, what's the risk that the district is undertaking by issuing, issuing revenue bonds? Against future sales tax revenue. And if, if the risk is actually borne by the, by the bond buyers, that's different than the, than the district being. In some way guaranteeing. The. Sufficient revenue to pay to retire those bonds.
There are certain provisions, Charlie, in all of the borrowings, whether it be Pepple, save or a general obligation bond that you cannot borrow. Above certain limits, they're called debt coverage limits, and so you have to have. Projected revenues that exceed your debt service by at least one point two five times. So again, it further reduces that risk at the district level before it does go to a bondholder as you're so. Accurately stating.
Thank you.
Last, don't we also have the highest bond rate of a school district in the state of Iowa?
We currently do, however, Moody's has issued new directives on that and it is possible that all of the bonds in the state of Iowa could get downgraded because of their change in theory, so. It's not anything that the district can control, they're taking a one size fits all approach to. School borrowings across the whole country, so. The same formula that they will assess our bonds will be the same thing that they assess the state of California. Or the state of Illinois to, you know, as a next door neighbor and so. If, if you hear that discussion coming up in any future discussions either from this committee or, or publicly about bond ratings, it's a national. Indication, but you're right, Dwayne, we are, we do have the highest rated bonds in the state.
You want me to go, Chase?
I don't want to cut off any other questions in the financing piece, but there aren't anymore, of course.
Yeah, go ahead, Dwayne.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa, you know. Say thanks again, it takes a team and it's a big team and there's a lot of people and a lot of them are on the screen. And I know some of them are watching, but. It, it, it's just been a fun experience and. Another ten years will be that much more fun, I guess. So here you see, and can you kind of. Size that up a little bit for me, Chase? Or can read it? And while he's doing that, we, we, we started out by dividing the projects into three groups. And then as the financing picture became clear, we knew it could, we didn't need to do that, but I left. There's some red bold lines horizontally that were dividing those three groups initially. But what we've done since, and before I get into that, if you look down the left hand column, we're assuming that construction will start in twenty twenty three. And that you'll also see I kind of put it by quarter, spring, summer, fall, winter. And that was to help Les figure out what the cash flow might be, and if you look down the right hand column of the page. That's the cash flow and what it could be, so the first four years, first three and a half years would be. Forty nine pushing fifty million and that's how we started this project. But I would point out to you that the projects that are listed on here. That are dark or black, the black type are projects that we feel are leftover projects. Critical maintenance projects, deferred maintenance, you may call it. Property purchases that need to be made. And. Projects that have been pretty well discussed. At their schools, for example, the city career tech center, city high career tech center and that northeast wing are things we did not do as part of the project that we know we need to do. West High, there's some security issues, there's a student commons, there's a front admin office. All those things have been pretty well discussed and we've left them on the projects that are deemed that we need to proceed with. If you scroll down the page just a little bit in the middle section, you'll see a lot of blue type. And that blue type is projects we've identified that need public input. For example, an addition at Van Allen and Garner, a possible addition at Lucas. North Liberty Elementary School, some classroom additions around the district, there are a number of elementary schools that feel like they need more classrooms. So those are discussions we feel like we need to have with the community and we've identified those in the blue type. And then as you, and as you keep working your way down the page, you'll see more blue and less black. And that's by design because those projects were anywhere from starting in twenty twenty six going forward. So we have, we've given ourselves four years to discuss, to start the discussion and talk about those projects. If we want to do. One example would be preschools, do we want to have preschool number one, number two, how do we deliver it, do we deliver it at the buildings or do we have individual buildings? And if so, do we have a property to address that? So there, that just kind of continues as you go down the page unless you mentioned two hundred and fifty five million, I think, but. We did have a elementary school for the southwest part of town to the project list, so it's pushing two hundred and seventy four million. But I'm certain that through community discussion and good planning, we can bring that number down and we can, we can hit your target, I have no doubt about that whatsoever. But if you, if you look in the lower right hand corner, you'll see that the two seventy four is the total proposed list. And then we have the critical needs and maintenance and properties at a hundred and seventeen or forty three percent. And then the community input projects at fifty seven percent are on nearly a hundred and fifty seven million dollars with projects. So. That's how we've divided it out, we took a careful look at the projects we need, we know we need to do. For example, in twenty thirty and twenty thirty one, thirty two, I've identified H fat projects at, at Horn, wherever Wickham, Lemmy. And those projects were, were done back, some of them back in the late nineties, early two thousands, but by this, by the time they reached thirty years old. There's going to be need to be some serious maintenance work, so that's why those projects are there. We've got security throughout, we've got technology throughout, those are constant upgrades that we need to do. Didn't think we'd probably needed to have a lot of discussion about that, we also have playgrounds. You know, we've been through a huge community discussion on playgrounds and accessibility and inclusive playgrounds that we've really got a good plan. Where we've actually, and we're, we're working, we're working the plan and it's going really well, we even got an inquiry from the city of Denver. Just a couple of weeks ago, inquiring us to, to know more about our plans, so our, our plan for playgrounds has become. Nationally known and nationally recognized and Ben Graham, our representative on playgrounds, has been asked to speak at many conferences, so. Playgrounds, the discussion we had and a lot of schools back when Janet was president. And I think we, we accomplished a lot and we're, we're working the plans, I'm pretty proud of the, proud of the guys for doing that, so. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Throw it out there now, if it's got any questions, jump on in.
Are we figuring inflation in?
I have a little bit, like for example, the tip club and elementary school right now is about eighteen and for the new one I've got at the bottom there in southwest, I've got nineteen and a half million, so. Yes, I have a little bit, I didn't do it. Mathematically, but just a gut feel for what it might be, so. We had, we had, you know, with years adjusted our budgets for inflation and I think that's something that you would probably do with your operations committee every couple of years, you'd look at those costs and see where they're at, so. But yeah, I think I gave a little bit for that.
Yeah, I appreciate the work, I like the way it's laid out, I like the prioritization. Knowing that we have to get community input on a lot of that, but it looks good, it's exciting if we can do this without a go bomb, that'll be. I'll be very happy about that.
Yeah, I'll just chime in, I think this is a really, really good first cut and a way to organize the work, I think JP, your point around getting the community input. And we have time to do that, right, we've got Portrait of a Graduate, we've got inputs that'll come with that process and after that. So we've got a good layout of, you know, phase one, been through that community input process over the next few months. I think we can really start laying in more concretely what comes next, I mean, Dwayne's got a great presentation of sort of a universe of ideas. That have come to us through FMP one point O, things that we know we need to do, but we have time to shape it and refine it and get a lot more dialed in. Before we get to the ballot next November and so I, I, I think, I think we're in a really good place to start with some high degree of knowns for the first phase and then shape and craft the phase and phase two and three. So that timeline that is presented as part of the material tonight, I think is really helpful. And appreciate that presentation, I don't know if that's what we want to talk about next, but. It's a good kind of future look at what the steps are that we'll need to take to keep moving through this process.
Sounds like my, my cue to, to, to bring that up, so. As Janet alluded to, we have put a timeline together that really focuses on just between tonight, February ninth, and when this would go to the ballot to the community. On November second and we have put, as Sean, Sean said it earlier, we put some kind of benchmarks in here to come back to the board. So the board can, can get a, a front row seat and then continue to be engaged. In the work and Dwayne mentioned those blue projects and one of the things that we've heard from the board, both the committee and, and the board as a whole is. Both the importance of Portrait of a Graduate and teaching and learning kind of shaping FMP two point O. And so you'll see on the timeline that a lot of the community engagement, actually all the community engagement takes place after we complete the Portrait of a Graduate process. This spring and when Janet was talking about, you know, how we shaped this prior to the vote. In November, one of the things that Charlie brought up that, that we have in here that I think is also important is. Establishing some guiding principles for really what are going to be our, our fence post, our guidepost for the workaround FMP two point O and so you see that we have that scheduled for June eighth. At a board work session that we'd come back and, and meet with you all about, okay, what are those themes? That should be guiding this work, we think that we, we know some of them based on the work that the board, that team had done together over the last year, equity being a big piece of that. But really having those kind of articulated before we go out and do community information sessions. What those community information sessions look like over the summer and the fall, I think really. Will be a result of what happens in Portrait of a Graduate and what happens with the, those guiding principle work there in June. But we did want to kind of timeline out some work over the summer with the community, but we also know that the community can, can leave town during the summer. And so we also wanted to give that opportunity again in the fall. The board has to vote on the actual ballot language on August twenty fourth, however, if you look back. To the, to the bullet that goes down right before that, you see June twenty second. As when we would present the draft language to the school board, again, that gives the board, the community time to digest what those ballot initiatives. Would actually look like before we have to finalize that and so. It is a high level timeline for right now, but really we think these are key steps. Including the Portrait of a Graduate work that need to take place between now and November to set us up for success to then begin that work that, that Dwayne. That Dwayne so nicely laid out and I think I mentioned this, but it's, it's worth noting again. One thing that while we articulated those projects in blue, the way that we do, we did is because we think Portrait of a Graduate will influence that. We might know that we need more space or classroom additions, but one of the things we also heard is that. Really that should be driven by the instructional practices and so we want to make sure that we don't predetermine. What things like that might look like and really see where we are as a district and what our priorities are and our focus before we start some of the actual construction work. Questions on the timeline or more board comment from Charlie, Janet, Lisa about some of the other things that maybe I missed?
I think it's good, Chase, that I was really, really happy to see this timeline. This, for me, starts making it real. Plotting it against, you know, work that we have to get done every month and being able to be transparent with the community about the steps that we're taking, the opportunity for involvement and and I think, you know, as we think about moving forward on this, I think is a board committing to this work, committing, committing to the community engagement. That's, you know, taking a page out of the playbook of FMP 1.0, that group did that amazingly well. And even, even not having to go for a geo bond in this first ballot, the community engagement is really critical and ensuring that people are aware, we're transparent, our priorities and sort of design principles, if you will, are well known. And I think, because we still have to get people to get out and vote and and vote for these initiatives and then just kind of eyes wide open, right? That this is a lot of work. And we're going to need to commit to it. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. It's absolutely the right timing. But we just need to make sure that we're committing to, to this level of work and community engagement to make it happen. And so thank you for the presentation of the timeline and the schedule. It really, really helps frame out the activity to make this successful.
Yeah, I very much agree with Janet's outline here in comments and very much appreciate the work you guys have done so on this so far. I, I'm a little wondering about how to incorporate the climate action work, which I, as I understand it from this, these projects is mainly replacing the buses with electric buses and replacing the heating systems in buildings away from natural gas to electric energy sources. If, if that's, if I'm fairly close to what what we're going to be looking for here in terms of fulfilling our climate action plan. Is that going to be, can we incorporate that work into the Portrait of a Graduate work? Are there a bit too separate, but related things as we go forward here?
Well, I don't see him as totally separate, Charlie. I do think you're on to something there. I think even from remembering our first session we had with Portrait of the Graduate, kind of, there was an environmental theme, you know, and and really through that portrait work, what they'll do is see which themes raised to the top for the district. And so even if that isn't a theme that necessarily raises from that design team's efforts through the portrait work, I think the board is obviously committed to that. And so I think we've kind of loosely talked about those guiding principles tonight, but as you guys talked in operations committee, I think that is a huge component from not only a transparency part, but an accountability part to the future. When we aren't able to determine what all those projects are, and when Duane talks about three or four years, you know, to determine some of those things or whatever that timeframe may be. Those type of commitments in those guiding principles, I think, not only hold this board, this admin team accountable, but future ones accountable to those same components. And so something like climate could fit nicely in there to say, hey, there needs to be a focus on that. And that should be part of where this facility plan goes. If that's one of the the issues that you guys commit to or that the community says is something this, this facility plan needs to incorporate. So those guiding principles, I think, are really instrumental and kind of filling in the blanks where we may not have some of those things predetermined in the fall.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to mention for the board with the timeline, the, the other component, and Sean alluded to it briefly during the main meeting, but the other component to the timeline that I discussed with Chase is that the operations committee is going to meet the first Tuesday of every month. And then the plan is to have a reoccurring board update at our first board meeting of the month to, to update the board and and keep everybody informed as to what is more nuts and bolts as to what's going on with the operations committee. And so the, the timeline, we, I think, and and Chaser's like, we don't want to clog it up, right? Because at some point in time, if you have thirty things on your timeline, that's just overwhelming. But the board will also be receiving monthly updates at the first meeting of the month as to the work that the operations committee has addressed in the previous month.
Charlie, if I could jump in here to your comment about the climate action plan and and kind of piggyback kind of what Matt was saying. I think it kind of parallels Sean's earlier question about looking to the future and how far out we're borrowing against. The Climate Action Plan allows us to to pay now to save later, not only from a dollar perspective and what it costs to heat and light our buildings, but also what it does to our environment and in the space around us. And so we're able to do that earlier. So I think that's a very nice compliment or corollary process there to have that climate action plan incorporated as we move through this FMP 2.0.
It's a great point, Les.
For those of you, yep, for those of you that may not have been aware, we did include a few of the projects. We intend to reduce, eliminate all the natural gas, heating and cooling equipment in the district. We provided for a future bus infrastructure upgrade at the, to, to have electrical charging stations at the, at the bus barnets in this plan. And we're even putting electrical charging stations at all three high schools in this plan. So we, we've identified a lot of climate action projects or several that will help us along the way.
So is, is the goal to basically take anything that was in the blueprint and make it black print by November so that the plan is complete and set or just a little farther down the road? Because there is a lot of time.
Yeah, I think that goes back to some of that guiding principle work, Sean. And so those blue things, we won't possibly identify all by the time we ask for a vote. And so there may be some things that are ideas, but I think that's going to be part of the challenge is assuring people that those guiding principles are really going to be the what we're committed to doing forward. And that's what's going to help flesh out that blue portion. And so I think being, like Janet said, I think how we begin community input is also very important because we'll want to maintain that consistency and that effort, you know, throughout the process so that people see we continue to come to and we continue to have that conversation that continues to inform the plan as we go forward.
I appreciate that. I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back to 2017 and you know, the amount of information that was out there ahead of a general obligation bond was pretty significant, right? Like the, the plan was pretty well set in stone at that point. And when we had flyers made up, but this is what's going on at every single school and things like that. And I understand that's, that's a different story when you're not talking about the bond, but I, I think people are going to want to know. You know, some concrete things and, you know, there's quite a bit of concrete in there, particularly, you know, in your A phase that you have laid out. But stuff all the way through the whole plan, there's some concrete there, but as people are looking to vote, even, you know, even as a revenue purpose statement and extending a current levy, they're going to want to know what all's in there. So I, I don't, I'm trying to figure out where, you know, where is the, the balance of having all of it ready versus, you know, knowing where we're headed kind of thing. And just as I'm, I'm thinking as a, as a voter and what they're going to be thinking of, because Greg, if I'm, it's going to be three separate things on a ballot, right?
Yeah.
And that's, in my head, that's a bit daunting. I, I think in the end, it's probably not that bad because you're asking folks for the same thing, just all together. You just have to do it in three separate pieces. But anybody who's not clearly informed of that are going to see three different things that you're asking for money to a certain degree. So I want to make sure that we're, we're just covering it all. And I want to know what our expectation is where we are at in the plan come November. You know what I mean? I, I just want a clear picture of that.
No, I think it's a good point. And I think, you know, historical perspective locally is something important to consider, right? Because of the bond and what was articulated at that point. You know, because I think you could also come at it from a frame of reference that the district probably already has more down on a page that some districts would go forward with, with a vote in the fall for. A lot of districts, you know, these are pretty nebulous concepts that you're approving the revenue purpose statement. You're approving the pearl for general ideas and there might not be the specifics that we already have determined. But that doesn't mean that's what our local communities used to, right? Or you, local communities used to coming off a process where they knew a well articulated plan. And so that's the needle to thread per se is how much information can we give them? Knowing that this isn't generally votes that you would ask and that you would have that great level of detail around because they're, they're more kind of general use resources that districts apply in different ways. And so I, I certainly appreciate that perspective, Sean. I think that's what we're just going to have to continue to talk about here through the spring is how can we get to a certain level of detail? And then what are the things that we articulate that are going to yet to be determined?
And I think that I would add that, go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I, I, I'm thinking too, Sean especially, that the, the things in blue are maybe are things that we and that we don't, we don't actually know when they're going to occur, or if they're going to occur. There's a lot of elementary schools in there, new junior highs. And that, that obviously all depends upon student enrollment, which is very difficult to predict when it's going to happen. So to me, this, the, the things in blue, especially, maybe some of the things in black are open to a more of a rolling community engagement process to try to get an idea of when they would actually result in new building. One of the things that I like about this approach is that we're committing at this point to maintaining all of the inter all of the schools that are in developed neighborhoods already. Longfellow, Mann, Lincoln, Schimmick, all the other schools, Penn, Hills, all of those schools. We're not talking about any kind of a major change in school size. We're going to, still going to have 300 school, 300 student buildings and six or 700 student building. So we're not, to me, we're avoiding that. The major change we're potentially looking at is a combined junior high school and or metal school, I guess, and preschools. So to me, those are the two major change in educational approach that this plan contemplates. And those things can be developed over time. What we, you know, what we need to do is have the financing in place to make those decisions when those decisions are appropriate. And I, I, I could vote for something like that, Sean. I don't know, sure. If enough, if, if half of them electra would also do that.
What I was going to add on to, to what Matt and Charlie said is that I think that's also the, the beauty of getting in front of this right now. That if we do start having those community conversations in the summer, Sean, and we start getting the feedback that, that you know, you're, you're voicing, which I think is something we need to consider. We have time to adjust rather than starting this in August and September and only going to the community once we'll, we'll limit ourselves. But you know, if that's the feedback we get in June, I think we've left ourselves enough time to have those conversations about, okay, what do we need to be presenting to the community to make them feel comfortable with, with, with those votes in, in November? And so I, I feel confident that given our timeline, that as those type of questions come up, we can come back as the ops committee, come back to the entire board and talk through those to keep us on pace as we move forward towards November. So I don't want to cut off conversation, questions or conversations, but I think that what we were kind of looking for tonight with the work session, obviously not a vote, but some consensus or a thumbs up from the board that the board is supportive of us continuing to do this work and, and moving down this path, because as the timeline says, the only vote the board really needs to take is not until August, but the committee was pretty adamant that we don't want to get to August 1st and Lisa give a report and the, and the board say, no, we don't want to do that. So really what, what we are looking for tonight is just consensus from the board to, to charge the ops committee to, to continue down this path. Give the monthly updates as Lisa has shared that we're going to do and start working towards, towards November. I, I do like that, that approach to, you know, sort of an iterative approach, right? Just like we did the first time through and kind of come back and keep tweaking things. The one concern I, I had, you know, and this was first presented, you know, at the last meeting was, you know, it's front loaded with a bunch of stuff that I won't say that it's completely decided already, but it's pretty firm in the ideas and, and just without having a chance to digest it all. That was a bit scary for me. As I've kind of looked through it and looked at those projects, most of them are not most people would have a question with, right? And I mean, there are things that we need to do. The one big thing that's in there is the Hills Elementary. And I will tell you that that's been the example. Every time we talk about the thing that needs to happen in FMP 2.0. So I don't think you're going to have a lot of flack on that either. So I do feel a lot better about what is in that Phase A package than I did when it was initially presented. So I appreciate that. I do think absolutely right that as we go through the Portrait of a Graduate, right? That's going to inform things like preschool centers versus preschools in, in, in those elementary schools and the middle school, if that's a choice, right? Those are, those things will come out of those kinds of discussions and we'll have a lot of input throughout those community meetings. I don't know that you're going to get a lot of people saying, no, don't fix the HVAC. I mean, I think that's pretty common stuff that we need to address year over year. So I, I like the, the total approach, but I, I do think it's going to be an iterative process as it should be. And I think that's kind of how it planned out to be. So I, I appreciate that. So I like it. And again, stunned silence from everyone. So that's probably a good thing.
I like it too.
Okay. You guys have anything else you want to share? Or do you feel like you, you're the, at least the ops committee and Duane and your team, you, you feel like you kind of know your next steps ahead of next time we get an update to the board?
Yes, I think, I think we do. I think we, we know where we are and in terms of what we need to do at the, at the next committee meeting.
Well, if there aren't any further comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for the night.
Seven thirty.
If JP did not, I would move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all a favor.
Hi.
Bye, guys.
All right, we'll see you next time.